All right, Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Yes, Mayor J. Max Davis.
Here.
And Councilmember Joe Gebbia, District Four.
Here.
Councilmember Bates Madison, District Three.
Here.
And Councilmember Rebecca Chase-Williams, District One.
Here, and all present.
All right. Please stand for the pledge.
Do you want to say "here" again?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Opening remarks, have a couple announcements. Again, this Sunday, October 19th, from 1:00 to 7:00 p.m., we have the Live in the Park, there's the poster back there for it.
Mr. Mayor, we, point of order, we intend to close our executive session, work session.
All right.
I move that we close the executive session.
You, Trey.
Is there a second?
Seconding.
Any discussion, all in favor of closing the executive session?
I do have discussion. I think that if anybody sees us doing this again, they should voice up, voice up openly.
I had to read lips.
Yeah, no, I'm not good at reading lips either.
Yeah, next time, you have the permission to actually verbalize, all right, anybody.
Vote.
Or flip the switch on the city attorney.
Right. All in favor of adjourning executive session, signify by somebody saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Do we need to call roll again?
I move that we end the work session.
Okay.
I second.
Any discussion, all in favor of ending the work session, signify by somebody saying aye.
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 All opposed? All right.
All right, if you would, recall the meeting to order and then just take the roll again.
Okay, then call the meeting to order. If you please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor J. Max Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Gebbia, District Four.
Present.
Councilmember Bates Madison, District Three.
Here.
Councilmember Rebecca Chase-Williams, District One.
Present.
All present.
All right. Now, opening remarks. The Live in the Park Music Festival is going to be this Sunday from 1:00 to 7:00 at Blackburn Park. There'll be food, drinks, and four bands will be playing. I'll be playing with Housebroken around 5:00 o'clock, playing and singing some songs, so come out and make fun of your mayor. And the headliner is a Journey resurrection, they're a Journey tribute band, and they're really, really good. So, hope to see you all out for that. It's a free concert. You just cannot bring alcohol in. You have to bring, buy everything there. Yes, you have a second?
I have several things to tell you about. Some good news this week from the U.S. Postal Office, making Brookhaven, the city of Brookhaven, an official city recognized by the U.S. Postal Service, so that when you search under UPS, USPS, for an address, it should come up under Brookhaven. Now, I will caution you that this is, they've included 30319 and 30329. There's slivers in our city of 30341 and 303, is it 28, Joe?
24.
24.
30324.
Are you in 24?
I am.
So, Joe unfortunately doesn't, we're still talking to him, and I'm hopeful we might still convince him, but they're telling us that it would cause a lot of chaos in delivering letters to the rest of that zip code, but we're going to continue to talk to them. We had asked them if we couldn't rename the, what I consider to be the Brookhaven Post Office on Dresden, officially, Brookhaven Post Office, and they said, "No, can't do that." It's the North Atlanta Processing Center that in fact stamps the mail for a very large area that goes beyond Brookhaven. So, we had asked if we couldn't have our own postmark and the mailbox, and the post office there, and they've refused that, but they have recognized us. So, that's a big step, and hopefully, this is the same database that the motor vehicle department uses, so that when you go to get your driver's license and you say, "I'm a proud citizen of Brookhaven," they will be able to find it. Right now, they look in their database and say, "I'm sorry, that doesn't exist." So, it may take them a couple of weeks as they update their systems, but the United States Postal Service address system is widely used by most government agencies, mailers, Amazon, Google, places like that. So, the good news is that we're official as far as the U.S. Postal Service is concerned. I have one other little-
You can still use Atlanta if you want.
Yes, and Atlanta is always an acceptable fallback, as well as a default address. I heard some nice feedback this week from a group of young ladies who have been raising money for a sorority sister of theirs who had cancer, and they had requested if they could set up a table, which we allowed them to do at the food truck event, and they sold lemonade for Lauren, and baked goods, and whatever, and successfully, with the generosity of our citizens, raised a record $725 for their cause, which they were extremely pleased about, and thanked us and the city for allowing them to do this, and I celebrate them for working on this good cause.
Also forgot to mention, yeah, thank you Rebecca, that this Thursday in Brookhaven Fields at Clack's Corner at 6:00, rain or shine, be walking with the mayor, so anybody who wants to come, from anywhere in the city or that neighborhood, to come walk with me for a couple miles and talk about city issues, or any kind of issues you want to talk about, to please come on by. That's this Thursday, the 16th, at 6:00 p.m. at Clack's Corner.
I'd like to make just a brief announcement. If anyone, you know, there was some emails that flew around to a lot of neighborhood associations about concurrent variances that came up this past week, and a lot of people were under the impression that that was on the agenda for tonight. It's not on our agenda tonight to be discussed, but if anybody's here to speak on it, I think that we'd welcome the public comments in the first public comment section.
I have two announcements. One's an informational update, and the other one I wish I didn't have to give you. Children's Health Care, I want to let you know that we received annexation requests last week from both Children's Hospital of Atlanta over on the North Drew Hill side, as well as Executive Park, and I want to read a news release that was put out today by Children's Health Care. It says, "Children's Health Care of Atlanta has filed an application for annexation into the city of Brookhaven. The not-for-profit pediatric healthcare system initiated the first meeting with the city of Brookhaven and filed for annexation of their office park at I-85 and North Drew Hills Road on October 3rd. The Brookhaven City Council will review the application by the end of 2014." Quote, "We felt the most prudent path for us to pursue was annexation into an already established city with a solid infrastructure," said David Tatum, Vice President of Government and Community Relations of Children's Health Care of Atlanta. "Change is inevitable for our office park and for other new cities forming around this part of town. We are being proactive in attempting to become part of an established city with a proven track record. Children's is an employer of choice and has approximately 1,200 employees on site at the office park each day." This announcement came out today, and I just wanted to share it with you. At this point, it appears it is being vetted by the city to make sure that it meets all county, state, and regulations. At that point, it'll be posted with DeKalb County, it'll be delivered to, it'll be filed with DeKalb County, and then it will become to council, it'll go to Planning Commission, and then it will come to council. So, that's just an update, so you know what's going on. The second piece of news, unfortunately, that I have to give you, is that a young man by the name of Mac Burgess, who was a staffer on Governor Deal's team, was killed today in an auto accident on Georgia 400. This is a real loss. He was 25 years old. He was a very vibrant young man, very intelligent, very engaging. I knew him personally. This is a real loss, and I just ask for your prayers for Mac and his families. Just a really sad time.
Thank you, Joe. Agenda announcements, I think we have some amendments to the agenda.
Good reports. Okay. Yes, there's a couple of matters that I'd like to ask the council to include to amend the agenda. The first one, under the consent agenda, is to allow for the authorization of the mayor to give notice to DeKalb County on the applications we receive from Children's Health Care of Atlanta and Executive Park for their annexation petitions. So, I'll need you to amend the agenda for that. Under the reports and presentations, the chief is going to give us a brief report on some personnel matters, and Jerry Kinsey, our Recreation Director, is going to review with you an overview of what he presented to you during our work session on some of our park furniture. And then, under New Business, item number one, which refers to and includes amendments to the stream buffer ordinance, I'd like to ask that you remove that, and we will place that on a future agenda. We're looking at October the 28th.
We'll have that for you, just one second, Mayor.
Agenda amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Bates and his tech knowledge.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we agenda, we agenda, the agenda? We amend the agenda, I'm sorry. When did you learn to spell? We amend the agenda to allow Mayor Davis to transmit annexation application for Children's Hospital, as well as Executive Park, to the county upon a proper vetting by the city. Number two, to, we amend the agenda to allow for park bench discussion, discussion, and then three, amend the agenda to remove item number one from New Business.
Chief.
And the chief.
I missed that one.
To allow the chief to make a brief presentation.
Okay, and then to, I also ask that we amend it to allow the chief to make his brief presentation.
Is there a second?
Seconding.
Any discussion?
There's a notification.
All in favor of amending the agenda, as stated, signify by somebody saying aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
All right, the agenda is amended. Public comment? Any public comment?
Dale Boone.
How you doing, Dale?
How you doing, Mayor, City Council? I cannot believe how outside I am to hear this great news from now District Four. I just cannot believe-
Hey Dale, you mind hitting the button to turn on your mic, please?
Not that we couldn't hear you, but-
I cannot believe that we have people now wanting to join Brookhaven. I'm really excited. I've been given a lot of thought, Beaufort Highway, and a lot of the cities I've known in the past, I've really took some serious time to study this and really put education into it, that if you build it, they will come, and if we left this to commercial or to the public to come and build this, it's not going to happen, because businesses come where money comes. Businesses come where they have customers. And even I, when I'm in India, we see a lot of American business coming, because India has 1 billion people living in a country, so they're coming there, they're building these brand-new places and stuff. And what just happens when we have left the commercial and left the public out for Beaufort Highway? If there's no money there, these businesses leave. This is why we need the Beaufort Highway Plan passed. This is the reason that we need to get behind the support of a yes vote of the agenda that is coming in November, because of the fact we do need the city to take a lead, we do need the city to build Beaufort Highway for us, because once you build that force, the businesses will come. And I've seen this time and time again overseas in America, when you leave it to the public to put it in a business, if their business is not doing good, they shut doors. They leave abandoned buildings behind. That is what has happened to Beaufort Highway. There's no money there, so instead of just sticking the city with abandoned buildings everywhere, that's literally is what has happened. So, I'm going to throw my support behind a yes vote to get this push for the city to have the powers to rebuild Beaufort Highway, and I highly suggest that we pass the Beaufort Highway Plan. As long, one stipulation, you knew we weren't going to get away from you. As we suggest, Brookhaven Boulevard, due to the fact that when I do ask public, Beaufort Highway has that name. The city of Brookhaven has now got a great name, as you see, people are now wanting to join Brookhaven. But honestly, when I go outside our city, they have no idea that I'm from Brookhaven. The second you say Beaufort Highway, I see this nasty smirk on her face, and that really bothers me. So, if we can really get a change, I'm all for it, so let's get this thing passed.
Thank you, Dale. Next.
Cory Self.
All right.
Good evening. Cory Self, reside at 2692 South Bambi Lane, here in Brookhaven. And I am here to publicly thank Ms. Garrett and Mr. Curry for their involvement over the last, I don't know, two weeks or so now, in one of the items under your consent agenda, the letter of engagement of Thrasher, List, and Smith LLC as the Board Attorney of the City of Brookhaven Zoning Board of Appeals. We have been in conversation for, I don't know, six months or so, back when Mr. Nama was the Chair of the ZBA, about a potential conflict that resides in the appeals of administrative decisions, where the city attorney, as he should, represents the city, and as is often the case, the applicant has an attorney representing them, and the ZBA is kind of left there with legal questions that need to be asked, but without anyone to ask them of, that would not have a conflict. So, I wanted to thank them publicly for their involvement and their willingness to take this on, and thank you guys for putting it on the agenda tonight, and hopefully, everything goes smoothly tonight. Also wanted to, I understand the concurrent variances will be on the agenda on the 28th, but I did want to just caution you in the vote for that. I know, I went back and watched the video from the Planning Commission. I understand the history of that vote. I'm concerned about the passage of concurrent variances for the sole reason that it will take out an opportunity for public input, and I think everybody in this room is aware of the importance of public input. My concern is that if you take it from something that would otherwise have three opportunities for input, the Planning Commission, the City Council, and the ZBA, and you reduce that to two by collapsing the process down, while it may be faster for developers to get through the process, the neighbors don't have as much opportunity to come out and voice any concerns or support that they may have, and we're all busy. I, you know, fully believe I'm one of the more actively engaged citizens in Brookhaven, and I have a hard time getting out to all the meetings. So, I would like you to consider denying the concurrent variances on the 28th.
Thank you, Cory.
Thank you.
Let me ask a question of our attorney. So, that's an, I've heard that issue before, and I'd love your clarification on it, about the number of public meetings that would be, that variances would be heard. So, the Planning Commission and City Council, are we hearing variances if there's something before?
No, the application process is straight to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the hearing and the determination.
So, all variances-
So, all variances bypass the Planning Commission and the council.
Yeah, so, so the, so in the event that concurrent variances would, to be approved, how many times would the variances be heard if there was a concurrent variance?
Well, it would be only in the question, only in the case of a rezoning application, and it would be heard together, both of them would be heard, both by the Planning Commission and then by City Council, and City Council would then have the authority to grant those variances or to deny those variances.
And then, ultimately, if you, the current process is, if, let's say that this were as an applicant who are coming forward for rezoning, even they know that they're going to have variances, is the Planning Commission and City Council, if that developer's coming forward with their rezoning, are they going to be able to discuss variances at those two meetings?
Neither has jurisdiction over that, only the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, any more comments?
Ronnie Mayer.
House everybody tonight, I'm Ronnie Mayer, I reside at 2709 Redding Road. I haven't been to a meeting in a while, because I've been very frustrated. You know, when you decide to get elected as the mayor and as council, you have to take the good, bad, and ugly. Well, I've been the-
Ugly?
The board of choice and ugly, and everybody calls me and voices their opinion with me, because I've been a community leader around here for years. I'm not really happy what I see. I like all y'all, but like I say, when you decide to take this job, some things aren't going to be happy and pretty. Y'all need to go back to stage one, where we started the city, regardless who was for it and who was against it. It's all one city now, and I keep hearing, you know, "Oh, this, oh, the old one city." We're all one now. We're all one, period, 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 period. So, but these things that we started off to be elected by, it was nothing to do with the pink pony, we still spending money, we need to just make a decision, get off it, let's go on with it, let's take that tax money, let's build some sidewalks. We started a thing with the garbage with Joe, we got off of that. We're on other things now. I love Rebecca to death. She's going to have a cherry blossom festival, we're going to spend a lot of tax dollars on a cherry tree that's prone to diseases, and I want to know who's going to water them and spray them, then when they all die, who's going to pull them up, and how much money we spending on them. We need to get some real tree people involved and see if that's really where we want to spend our money, but I still love you Rebecca, and your idea is great, but that cherry tree is disease-prone, and I just don't want to go spend $100,000 on trees when that's not what we, you know, we need police officers now, I want to see a traffic unit, here we are trying to go across 85. We don't even have, I mean, I have no problem with that, because there's a lot of tax dollars over there, you know, and commercial property, but if you go over there, the bulldozing all those buildings over there, and that's enough, you know, to put some energy into that, instead of spending all your energy and time on the pink pony. We leave the pony alone, go over there to Executive Park, but still, we're not working on our issues we have. Parks, police, permits, there's problems with permits. Everybody says, you know, "You got a 15-day window, and if you don't have everything right," they wait till the 15th day, pull you in there and say, "It ain't right," another 15 days. People are complaining out there. Late other night, pulled me aside and said, "Did she even talk to J. Maxx?" and didn't get an answer, but people are very frustrated out there, and I think y'all need to just stop where you're at and just smell the roses and go backwards. Let's fix those things that we started about. Whether I was part of it or not, I'm part of it now, and I'm here, and I want to see the parks, police, I want to see a traffic unit or two, I even want to see the people that go around, you know, for the grass-cutting people, they need to be in a police uniform. That way, you can use them to do traffic around the school in the morning for a couple hours, and then do the issues with grass-cutting or signs in the wrong way or whatever. I just think that we need to stop, smell the roses, and do what we need to do first, then graduate on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Terrell Carstens.
Terrell Carstens, 2444 Osten Island Drive, speaking as a private citizen only. In our budget, there's, you may not be able to speak on this tonight, but I'm asking if maybe you can address it at an upcoming meeting, but y'all were allocated discretionary funds, or contingency funds, or whatever, and my question is, is if you can give us maybe an update of what the current allocations have been, if there's balances left, and if you would like any suggestions from the public as to how maybe we could utilize it and spend it in the future.
Do you, what discretionary funds do you know we have? Is that like our personal?
In the 2014 budget, each elected official was allocated $25,000 for special projects, and again, I'm just traveling off of memory, if you'll allow me, and I will go back and look at the information in more detail, but if memory serves me correctly, the only member that used any of their discretionary funds or their project funds was Mr. Gebbia. $12,500 went to advance the recycling carts for DeKalb County to assist them in launching that program and supporting it. We do expect to receive reimbursement for that, and the rest of the discretionary monies, you gladly contributed that to the mid-year budget adjustment. You have nothing left.
The answer is you took it away from us.
Yes, I did.
So, I just have to clarify. So, when the $12,000 comes back, okay, since you've already reallocated, can I get my hands on it quicker?
You can.
All right.
We can reallocate it back.
David up forward.
So, so-
Probably.
Oh, golly.
And then, if I could just make one other comment concerning discretionary funds, is that none of you have the authority to authorize the payment of those funds, that they had to be, you know, requisitioned and reviewed by the city manager. So, there's, you have no control over any payments or any sources of payments, and those are reviewed.
I think proof of that is how it has actually been handled this year. So, I said, proof of what you're saying is how that has been handled this year, which I thought has been handled very well.
So, would you say that a more appropriate definition of those funds would be that those were contingency funds for each district that have sort of been reallocated to general contingency fund of the city?
Well, they were reallocated to the general fund to support, whether it be the Police Department, or Community Development, or the Fire Marshal. It went to the operations of the city. And again, you know, these funds, this was mid-year budget adjustment, which we just did about six weeks ago, and, you know, they're being monitored, and it's my hope that we will have funds left over at the end of the year, which I would recommend that we put into reserve, and a particular percentage of that, so we can maintain our status as to how much we've been aggressively saving, and then, if there are additional funds left over, I'll bring that to the attention of the mayor and council, and you all can, as we did last year at the end of the year, if there were what we called our Christmas list, to do things for the community at large. So, we'll be discussing that. You know, I feel, right now, revenues look good, and, you know, those funds that have been removed from your budgets are still in place. They are, however, you know, some of it is supporting the operations.
Thank you. All right, any more public comment?
No more comments.
All right. Consent agenda?
Yes, on the consent agenda, there are now seven items on that list. The first three deal with special call meetings or regular meeting minutes. The fourth and fifth items are related to the point that they are the meeting calendars for land use, which is Planning Commission, and then meeting calendars in the process for the Zoning Board of Appeals. The sixth item is the engagement letter for Mr. Ray Smith of Thrasher, List, and Smith to serve as the attorney to the Zoning Board of Appeals on administrative appeals, and then the last item is the authorization of the mayor to execute a letter notifying the county that we have received petitions for annexation from Children's Health Care of Atlanta and Executive Park.
All right. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as stated by the city manager.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I just want to make a point of clarity. I think your numbers may have been a little bit off on the fifth and sixth, but the content was the same.
Oh, the fourth and fifth, thank you. I apologize. And I just wanted to ask a question about the letter of transmittal that the mayor's going to send. Yes.
Could you just explain the process here, and maybe our attorney could just clarify the legal process that has to happen?
Right, I'll let the city attorney do that. There are a number of requirements pursuant to the annexation law, one of which is this letter, and we do have a, it's time-sensitive as to when we determine we have a complete application, but Tom can speak to that, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have further ones.
Any petition for annexation has to be reviewed by the city for its completeness. In this situation, there have been two petitions that have been submitted, one by Children's Health of America, and the other by the owners of Executive Park. Part of an issue with any sort of petition is that certain things have to occur- Part of an issue with any sort of petition is that certain things have to occur or must not occur in order for the petition to have a legal basis to it. So part of what the, the staff has been doing as well as, as well as the attorneys is to, is to determine that we do have a complete application. And we had some initial comments to that application. The form of the application really ones is so that there's no pockets being formed. There's, it's what's called the 60% method. In that situation, you have 60% of the owners of the area of land in which the petition of annexation is done, supporting the application, and you also need 60% of the electors. Part of what the city's due diligence is, is to determine who the electors are and what elector residents there are in the areas that are being annexed. That came back today from, from elections in the county and there are none. So we have done the final review of the petitions. They're complete and we anticipate that they will be transmitted to the county, which is required under the annexation procedures tomorrow. And in connection with that, the county has five days to raise certain objections associated with that. The city will also begin publishing public notices for the planning commission, which will be held on November 12th. And then the last meeting of, in November for the city council as far as the public meeting and taking what action on, on the annexation. In between that period of time, the city and the city manager will be preparing a report talking about the various economic aspects of the annexation and also what the plans for the service delivery would be. And that's also required by state law, that that be delivered and, and that be discussed. If we get far enough through to the annexation resolution, then we can discuss and I can explain to you what occurs after that as far as what appeal rights may very well be of, of other property owners associated with that.
Thank you, Tom. All right. Next.
So, wait, I think we need to vote on it. But just for clarity, the, the only thing that changed on the printed consent agenda was the addition of this transmittal.
Right.
Can you explain the concept for those that don't understand it about electors?
Electors are, are the actual voters that live, that reside in the area that's being annexed.
Right.
In this situation, all of the property is commercial. And all of the addresses were given to the board of elections in the county and they concluded, they said tonight that there are no registered voters in either of the areas to be considered under the petition.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Can I just make a point of clarification? The city clerk leaned over and made this point and I want to make it for the record. We keep saying letter, actually there are two letters. One is for Children's Healthcare of Atlanta and the second one is Executive Park.
All right.
We need to vote.
Are you ready? Any more discussion? All right. All in favor of adopting the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the motion passes.
Okay, the next item is item number H announcements and Ms. Hyde, our city clerk, has an announcement.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify where our early voting precincts are. As you know, early voting did start this week, but it hasn't started here at City Hall. We will have early voting at City Hall the week of October the 27th through the 31st from 7:00 to 7:00 that week. There are also other opportunities to vote throughout DeKalb County. You can find those locations on the elections and registration board of DeKalb County. But I want to make sure you knew that you could vote here at City Hall that week. And you cannot vote on the Monday, November the 3rd, there's not any early voting then. There is a Sunday voting in DeKalb County and that's at the Shambly Civic Center. That's held Sunday, October 26th, 12 noon to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, 10:20 during the week of Monday through, and also Monday through Friday, 10:27 through the 31st. But there is one Sunday voting and, and of course, election day is November the 4th. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had asked that we put this public service announcement on our website? Is that possible to do instead of directing it to DeKalb County Election Board?
I think it's going in our newsletter also.
But we'll have it posted on the website. Okay, great.
Newsletter.
And City Limits.
City Limits, eBlast and website. And Facebook. But those dates one more time for the Brookhaven?
Oh, Brookhaven City Hall is October the 27th through the 31st from 7:00 to 7:00. And it's on our first floor in the business incubator room.
They'll still get the stickers. You voted, I voted.
And DeKalb County will be here conducting that service.
Marie, I'd also like to ask that maybe we have an absentee ballot available for people to download and print?
Absentee ballot application.
Yeah, it's just the application? It's a PDF file? Should be pretty easy.
We can try that. It is on DeKalb County's website, but we couldn't get it.
Yeah, it should be an easy thing to do. Anything that can make it easier to get higher participation is a great thing.
At my computer, never mind.
Just want to ask if we can get the agenda up on the monitors in the room?
Yes.
Thanks.
All right, next. After that was Susan's announcement.
Reports and presentations, we have two, beginning with the chief.
Thanks, Marie, mayor and council. We had a couple of unfortunate incidents the past couple of weeks with some supervisors. But before that, I always like giving good news before bad news. I know Councilman Gebbia has been getting slammed with phone calls and, and things, a number of car break-ins in the Pine Hills neighborhood, both on the Atlanta side and the Brookhaven side. We were fortunate enough about two days ago, I think we had about 11 of them and Atlanta had probably about the same amount. And they all happened during the nighttime hours. About two days ago, a citizen called us in that area. We were able to locate someone, actually one of our lieutenants located someone, made an arrest and he had a bunch of property. We're still trying to identify and we're getting together with Atlanta to try to build up more cases. But the same individual that they caught was actually arrested by us about a year ago in the Peachtree, Ashford, Dunwoody area for breaking into cars. So that was the good news. The unfortunate and bad news, when we started up, we, we instituted our standards of conduct and we took it very seriously and we passed it on to all of our supervisors and all our officers that were strictly abiding by them. Everyone's held to a standard, supervisors especially are held to a higher standard. In the past couple of weeks, we've had an investigation going on and as gets most people in trouble with, in, in all agencies and all private sector industries too, social media. We strictly adhere to our policy on social media and we, we ended up terminating actually two of our supervisors. One was lieutenant, one was a sergeant for violations of the social media. And the lieutenant was also involved in not complying with orders and, and applying for grants and some work that he was supposed to do. Lieutenant was actually, he resigned in lieu of termination. The other supervisor, a sergeant, is actually going through the appeal process right now, so we can't get into details on that right now. But we'll be going through testing procedures and things like that for promotions in the near future.
All right. Thank you, chief. You don't have high expectations, you probably don't have that kind of stuff, so the high expectations are, I'm glad we have them.
We do.
All right.
Now we have Mr. Kenzie to talk about some of the park furniture that we're getting ready to bid out.
Mr. Mayor, city council, we have, we discussed earlier, two benches. We have a six-foot bench, it's a metal bench with vertical slats and it's a black, it'll be the one on the right. And the other bench would be the, similar to the one on top, the vintage bench, which is a, a black frame bench, but it'd be more with the recycled wood look.
I like that one on the left, top left.
Is it actually the, the recycled wood, that new stuff they're building decks with, that plastic composite stuff?
It could be that or you could even use aluminum with that look. You could have that finished look on it like that.
My, my preference would be to stay away from, you know, the aluminum, the metals, you know, for the summertime heat, particularly those sunny areas. But, but if the, if it is that recycled wood, I think that's, that's a great look too.
What do you think? You don't, you like the plain jane?
I happen to like the black one. I think it, it, first of all, it matches a, a good deal of the park furniture that we've got in a number of our parks as well as the, the PCID. I think it's just a really classy look. I don't know if there's any advantages or disadvantages on upkeep or maintenance. Do you know, Jerry?
Not right offhand. I mean, just the, the wood look is a wider base, so it would, you know, may need pressure washing more. But besides that, I don't, I don't think really the maintenance issues would be a, a big problem.
I, I like the, you showed us before the matching garbage can that, that is the same style as the, as the black bench. Is there something comparable that goes with that wooden bench? I guess there probably is.
I'm, I'm sure there are trash cans made with that.
Any black can would go with it. You wouldn't have to.
What, what's your timeframe for having to pull the trigger on this decision?
ASAP.
I was hoping we'd get it in by the end of the year.
If you like vintage Parisian, raise your hand in the audience.
Audience participation.
If you like vintage Parisian, anybody else? Come on, Cory?
Oh, come on, classy guy.
No goading.
All right.
When does your appointment come up?
Since you're going to call me out here, I would suggest, can you maybe put a couple of them in one park and let people actually see what's comfortable and ask the residents, do they like one or the other? I don't know that the aesthetics are really going to make that much of a difference. They're both nice, nice looking benches.
Oh, that's great.
But if they're not comfortable, nobody's going to use them.
If you like black bomber, whatever, whatever that one's called, raise your hand. Oh, vintage Parisian wins.
Jerry, what's, what's, what's your opinion?
Here for the pleasure of the fortness.
Look, the, I, I can tell you that, that the, you know, by the time we get these things, I think it's going to be relatively cold. And our winter time seating in our parks is probably not as hot. So I, I would contend that we probably have more time than we think, even though it's, we'd love to get these things out there. I think that's a great suggestion to test market these things. Any business would, would test something before they go out and, and make a purchase of it. The other thing I think that if we can do, if our communications has this capability, I know that there's some apps out there. There's one that, that is about citizen engagement as a online tool. You know, if we could blast this out, we may not get that many respondents, but you know, this is a great, this is an opportunity for us to get people engaged. And I think, I think it's a smart thing for the city to do.
It'd be fun too. I'd be really interested though, on that wooden one, I'd really like to know, is it wood, is it composite? And is it really that much, is it going to be a higher maintenance?
Yeah, what's the cost difference?
I want to know, is it going to fade in the sun? You know?
It shouldn't fade, it will be recycled material.
Which ones, what's the cost difference? Is there?
I don't know the cost difference. We haven't.
So if it's the TruX.
They're being close.
If it's that TruX board stuff, recycled, you know, plastic material that they're making decks out these days, that's maintenance free, solid color through. But if we put it out there to the public, people need to know what the cost is and then any maintenance cost, you know, or lifespan or warranty, you know, just a little bullet point.
Yeah.
Jerry, do you think it's possible to get these vendors to send us a, a couple of samples and we can put them out there?
I don't know about samples. We might get a, we might buy a couple or buy one and put them beside each other.
That's, there you go.
Because we have these metal, we got these metal benches.
There you go.
And just rotate them around, rotate them around the park.
Parks is care.
You got to make that decision right next to each other. You can't drive it.
You could just engrave your vote yes on one of those, you know.
Hey mayor, let's get, let's get two in for Sunday and then everybody comes to the event and we take a vote.
Yes. Thank you. All right. Okay. No recount, there's no runoff on that, it's clear winner.
You know, I'm glad I don't have to furnish a house with you guys.
Just so the public can rest assured, we are going to be bidding out whatever is decided.
I know, I know. All right.
But it was kind of my hope that we'd get new furnishings in the park by the end of the year, so.
Right, and that was our plan, that we would give notice through the bid, that they not only had to be received, but installed.
So let's back up. What's the drop dead date to see that we get it in, you know, to have all this take place, the bid, the order, the delivery?
Well, it just depends on, you know, how quickly we can get, you know, one of each of these samples and get them placed so people can sit in them. I would recommend that we just have them in one place so we're not carting them all over the city. And perhaps right there by the recreation department at Linwood and people can go in and cast their vote right there.
We should bring them to the food truck event.
Yeah, there you go. That's a good idea too. We could look at that.
We have a couple weeks left for that.
But I would hope that, you know, maybe we'll just have them up for a vote for about a week.
Our Christmas tree lighting, we'll have them for that.
They should be in the park by then.
Here's, here's what we can do. Jerry, just listen to this. We're going to bid out both of them so we can make, you know, all use of our time, so we don't waste any time. And then we'll get the pricing and people can sit and decide what they like and we can report that back to you and then we'll let you know what it's going to cost and we can make a decision and get them ordered and installed.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. But we are moving forward, right?
Yes.
What's, what's next?
What's next is new business.
All right.
Okay, excuse me.
Old business.
Old business, thank you. Consideration of adoption for the city of Brookhaven Buford Highway Improvement Plan and Economic Development Strategy. This, as you know, is one of the four planning initiatives that mayor and council moved forward with. We did have a steering committee. This plan has also been shepherded by our development authority. At their last meeting in September, they did move to recommend approval with one contingency and that was they wanted a preamble included in the plan, which is now here, that basically gives notice that this is a concept plan, it's a vision, and that they acknowledge that more in-depth studies are going to be necessary to be able to get us to full implementation. So that is in the document now and of course, it has been through a number of public hearings, a number of, several steering committee hearings, open houses, and the development authority is ready to move forward with their recommendation of approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve document 2014-47, Consideration of Adoption for the City of Brookhaven Buford Highway Improvement Plan and Economic Development Strategy as amended by the development authority with the pre, addition of the preamble.
I second.
Any discussion?
I really like this preamble and whatever hesitations I've had on the Buford plan sort of are, are taken care of by explaining this is really just a conceptual plan, it's just a proposal. I, I don't, I, I just fear that people somehow think that we pass these plans and it's set in stone or it has some, some sort of more official enforcement than it does. It's really a suggestion and I think this preamble sort of lays that out. You know, there were some things I didn't like about the Buford plan, but again, I, you know, you don't expect to like everything and, and again, it's a guidepost, it's a suggestion and I'm glad this preamble spells that out.
We won't tell everybody that I said you can plant your cherry trees along there, right?
The disease-free ones.
Yeah, the disease-free ones, right.
I'd just like to add in that my, in my serving with the development authority, I know that the development authority is excited to participate and to have had the chance to provide for their own additions and adoption of this plan. I think it does provide for, as Dale mentioned, that, that vision for Buford, the improvement of Buford Highway, which has been needed for so long, which was absent while we were unincorporated, but hopefully this is a start of a great project moving forward. And this is the blueprint of a plan to be able to, to have that, to track that development community and the businesses to our area.
I'm going to say pretty much ibit to what Bates just offered, but we've made the comment openly many times that we regard Buford Highway as our diamond in the rough and it truly is. And we underwent a very long project here and this is the, tonight will be the completion of the first phase as we really now start to move forward and make this a reality in the city of Brookhaven. This is a very, very, very exciting moment. I'm very pleased to be a part of it.
Marie and I were in a meeting today where we heard a great suggestion that Marie and I were in a meeting today where we heard a great suggestion that we really, we ought to try to engage Shandley and Dorville and really have, connect the whole Buford Highway, because, you know, I hate to admit it, but some of the best restaurants are in other parts of Buford, but it's this great international corridor, and it shouldn't necessarily stop at our borders, but I think we can be the impetus for change, and we can be the start of something really quite fantastic across the region and through our neighboring communities.
Well, you know, that's obviously an objective that's been voiced here and within our city limits to look at this regionally, but just little insight, as the chamber is moving to have an international fair along Buford Highway between the three cities.
Oh, excellent.
So that's under, that's under thought already. That's been offered up in conversation. Right, Rick? Excellent.
And for those who haven't read through the plan, there is a significant portion which talks about the North Fork of the Peachtree Creek as a long linear park, which is only a mile from the Atlanta Belt Line from the City of Brookhaven city limits. So it's a good place for people to be educated about the vision that is being considered for that area.
And if you miss it in that plan, it's all, it's in the three other plans as well.
All right. All in favor of the motions, you know, basically saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes.
Excellent.
Okay, under new business, item number one has been removed from the agenda. Going to item number two, this is consideration and approval of the Buford Highway Opportunity Zone Plan. Mr. Joe Young has been serving to the Development Authority in the preparation of this plan, and has worked with me on it. This is a job tax credit plan that will have to go to the state for approval. It will be a joint approval with the Department of Community Affairs and the Georgia Economic Development Department. The Development Authority did review this and did recommend its approval. This is another valuable economic development tool for the city, and Mr. Young is here.
Did we jump in the order of new business, two?
That was taken out.
We struck number one.
Oh, okay. I didn't see that.
All right.
Mayor, council members, my name is Joseph Young, I'm an attorney. I'm actually from Vinings, but I say Atlanta. The purpose of this discrete redevelopment plan, which tracks essentially the same areas as the Buford Highway corridor, plus part of Peachtree Road down to city limits up here to just about to Osborne Road, purpose is to qualify the area for a certain type of job tax credit. It's called the Opportunity Zone Job Tax Credit. It's been around for about five years. It's discretionary on the part of Department of Community Affairs and Department of Economic Development. The commissioners approve it, there's a process for the approval, we'll have the application probably done by the end of the month. We've had to follow along step by step with the city's planning process, so that we were always behind, and y'all were leading, and we never got ahead, to see exactly what this is all going to look like. Each census block group along Buford Highway, and two of them here on Peachtree, is eligible because it has certain demographics. The largest eligibility factor is the poverty level. A couple of the Buford Highway corridor block groups, as you know, have very high poverty levels, up in the, well above 50 percent, directly across from Northeast Plaza, of the main rooms that we're talking about here. But there are a string of nine of them along Buford Highway. There are two more, as I say, over here on Peachtree Road. Because they're eligible, they, once a redevelopment plan is put in place outlining them, then we can extract parcels from within that area and ask for opportunity designation, opportunity zone designation on a parcel-by-parcel basis. We literally go through and identify specific parcels, there'll probably be about 180 when we're done. The virtue of opportunity zone status is that it is probably the best job tax credit in the state of Georgia. It is applicable to creation of two or more jobs. That is whether a company brings in new jobs, comes in with a new factory, comes in with a new, factories are not, probably not what you're going to see, except possibly on Northeast Expressway. When they bring in new jobs, or when they home-grow them in their own business, if they're already there, any two or more become eligible to receive $3,500 in tax credits per year for five years. The zone itself will be in existence, if it is approved, for 10 years. So you have a total of 15 years, in which creation of new jobs yields $3,500 per job per year for five years. That's not a lot, if you're only talking about two or three jobs. If you end up, as many of our neighboring cities have, with 1,000, 500, or 1,500 jobs coming in, you're suddenly talking about very large amounts of money. The General Motors site in Roswell was a single opportunity zone eligible parcel with 1,500 jobs put onto it. It's $21.5 million paid out over five years. Unlike a lot of job tax credits, these don't just go away. If your company does not have that much income tax obligation to the state of Georgia, you may retain your employees withholding tax for any employees you have in the state, which makes it very attractive to larger corporations, the same way it's attractive to very small ones. The idea with Buford Highway is to create the jobs along Buford Highway for the people who live along Buford Highway who need jobs. It's a pretty simple concept. It's a nice straight road, and we're all familiar with the layout of it. There's some industrial area down by REI that you're probably familiar with, some of you, I'm sure, have seen it. At the same time, because communications are so excellent in this part of, this part of metropolitan Atlanta, we believe it's appropriate to include some of this area on Peachtree here, if we can get it designated, because it connects to the MARTA station, that connects to Buford Highway. It's not any big trick to get back and forth between the two. One of the things we've noticed in going through all of this is that there's a big change coming. It's here, most of us don't even think about it, and that's Georgia 400, which as of a few months ago, you can leave North Fulton and arrive here, long before you can arrive downtown, by taking the loop around and coming up on North Druid Hills. So suddenly, North Druid Hills and Buford Highway becomes accessible from North Fulton. That takes a while for these kinds of impacts to be felt, just as it took years before development occurred along Georgia 400 in the north to begin with, when it was run through. So we'll see that in the future. There is no agenda attached to any of this. Opportunity Zone Job Tax Credit classifications are available for any type of business, any legal business. Existing or new, any legal business. If you add two or more employees, you'll get the credit. Usually, the city helps the businesses understand, put it in your business license information for them. With that, I'll just open to any questions you may have.
This is a no-brainer, I think.
I had a question. One of the things we discussed when you presented to the Development Authority was that the plan that we provided for the Buford Highway corridor economic improvement plan, that it showed that there was going to be a, that commercial business enterprises were going to be developed. Did we have adequate information in that plan that helped support that we're gonna be trying to create jobs for these residents around there?
Yes, we do.
We did?
We've reconciled the two very carefully to make sure that there's no conflict between them. As I think the new preamble states in the Buford Highway plan, the, it's aspirational, these are some possible things that could be done, but there is no preclusion that stops anyone from coming in and saying, this, pick one. The intersection of North Druid Hills and Buford Highway is a great place for, you know, if you want to consolidate some parcels and build a larger facility, at the same time, you've got empty storefronts.
Yeah.
And if you can fill those storefronts, that's a positive, that's a benefit to the entire city right there.
Yeah, well, it's good, and certainly, as we see development, you know, more and more frequently, it's mixed-use development, so it's not really, you know, even though it might show up there, there's commercial zoning or residentially zoned, you know, the future is, you want to create that live-work-play environment, and that usually creates a good live-work-play, you know, highest and best use of property, but also provides those jobs, which is critical for this area. Thanks.
This would also apply for somebody that's a registered work at home?
As long as you're a legal worker, and you bring in, and you have two or more, they can't be married. Why they put that in there, I do not know. But that's the one restriction in this job tax credit program.
You're gonna be married to one person.
What I can't figure out, and I've not, I've never been asked, is what if two of them are, or the three, and two of them are married? I don't know. That's why we invented lawyers.
Joe, I wanted to make sure I understood, so the finances of this, where does the money come from? This is state, this is a state tax credit?
It is a state tax credit. Every business, with, virtually without exception, pays withholding tax to the state for its employees.
Right.
The money that is paid here is essentially two types. One is the corporation or the individual, if it were an individual sole proprietor who had some employees. They don't pay their state income tax, they keep that money, but they also can, if that doesn't completely cover their credit, they can retain the withholding tax, they would otherwise pay over to the state. So what this is, is a net reduction in state taxation.
Okay, it's not, it doesn't touch the federal payroll or federal taxes? It's all state income and state withholding?
I'll pretend you didn't ask that question, because that would require me to discuss federal tax law, which I don't claim.
Oh, no, don't do that.
No, but seriously.
It doesn't come from the city or the county, it comes from the state.
It does not come from any coffers, other than the state coffers.
So there's no, there's no additional tax burden on our citizens or on our government?
None.
This is really money that is available by the state to anybody who wants to create a job?
That's correct. There are roughly 80 of these zones in existence right now. It's becoming harder and harder to get them approved, but hopefully, with the help of your delegation, we can, whose input will be very important at Department of Community Affairs and Department of Economic Development, hopefully, we can get at least some of the area designated.
Thank you, Joe.
We actually started our conversation on this, you and I, about 10 months ago, so it's been a long 10 months. I think we had some pretty bright prospects of what we were looking for at the time, but we wanted to wait for the Buford Highway plan to finish. So for the edification of all the people here, will you talk about the process that takes place, as far as this has to go, before the legislature?
It actually doesn't go before the legislature, it goes to the Department of Community Affairs and to the Department of Economic Development. Part two, the Department of Economic Development, is relatively new. The real grunt work of reviewing the applications is done by the Department of Community Affairs. And what we will provide them with is a set of materials, they specify what they want. GIS map with a number of layers in it that shows the parcels we're asking for, that shows the redevelopment areas, so they can be sure they're eligible, shows the census block groups, so they can check those against the percentages and be sure that everything's available. Then they will review that and say, the best way, the deputy commissioner, I think, is putting it these days, is saying, are you focusing what you're trying to do on a problem, an actual problem area? In the early days of this program, when the, when we were in the middle of the Great Recession, it was very easy to get very large areas designated. I think in Union City, we got 6,500 acres, which has since generated something on the order of, off the top of my head, around 2,500 jobs in a city of 10,000 people.
Wow.
So it, that was one of the first ones. It's gotten progressively more difficult. The advantage that you have is your disadvantage, and that is, those census block groups along Buford Highway with very, very high poverty rates by the 2010 census, some of the highest in all of North DeKalb. What you're focusing on here is addressing that problem. It may have consequences beyond that problem, which would be good, making the area eligible for people to come in and do what happened in Roswell with theirs, to do what happened in Alpharetta with theirs. In Alpharetta, we took seven parcels, it's a very small one, consolidated all seven parcels, got approval for the one parcel. It contains four office buildings that hold, oh, total about 3,500 people. They've already got 1,500 in.
So lastly, can you just go through the time period now, what you do?
We should be able to have this wrapped up by the end of this month. We've been delayed considerably because we have to follow along behind the Buford Plan, but it's one of those things that, once you get past the hurdles, it's, now it's just a matter of getting some, pulling some data together. Now, we've got our final parcels that we need to look at. Hopefully, we get that submitted before the end of the month or by the end of the month. Then the department will take some time, and we cannot say how long, to review it. And part of what you will be asked to do, I think, is to, is to assist with your representatives and senators in visiting over at Executive Park, and saying, hello, Commissioner, we're here to talk to you about how much we need this. And one of the points, which I think is incredibly important for Brookhaven, is this. Had this, had an application been put in for Buford Highway four years ago, five years ago, I would stand up here and tell you, you are going to be approved. I will, nothing's 100%, but you're gonna get approved. Those days passed, and they passed because DeKalb County did nothing for you. Now, you know, I'm a longtime resident of DeKalb County for many years, I have great due respect for them. Why they did not apply for opportunity zone status for the obvious area of Buford Highway, I do not understand. You're, you didn't have the opportunity to help yourself, so you come, you're coming late to the table, but that doesn't mean there shouldn't be a place for you.
Right.
So do the job, the jobs that are created, are they, assume the census tracts you're pulling out is a high poverty rate, these are often the residential census tracts, is that right?
It's designed to avoid that problem, that, we revised, I worked with the department five, six years ago now to revise this program. Originally, it did not work, and the reason why was exactly what you just said. It was done on a basis that caused you to be looking at, you could only put, or create, be creating jobs.
Where the people lived.
Where there was actually high poverty. Well, you can't create jobs in residential neighborhoods, it's just not gonna work. So what we did was we added adjacency, and we expanded the scope of the thing a little bit, so that you're looking at, you look at an area that's got a population, and then you look to, how do you serve that population logically?
So, so if you're targeting a census tract that's on one side of Buford Highway, but you get a company to come in on the other side or around the corner, do you have to show the direct link that the people who lived here are now working over here?
No. It's, it's a little bit more notional than that. In your case, there's a very clear logical connection.
Yeah.
It's, the buses run up and down Buford Highway, it's a very accessible area, creation of jobs there is going to logically result in higher employment.
If the net job, if the job is eliminated, or the jobs, the credit's eliminated, correct? If they're, say you have, you create 10 new jobs, and then the following year, you have eight new jobs?
Then you, it is reduced automatically. This is not a program which works by saying, throw money at us and something will happen. It says, you have to go out and earn the jobs. You earn the job tax credits, they're only paid after the jobs are created. There's no, there's no deal about, I promised this much, and then it didn't come out, that kind of thing.
Right. Thank you, Joe, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Exciting thing, and we'll be, we'll look forward to announcing that we've got opportunity zones in Brookhaven.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Mayor Davis, we have two people who wants to talk, make a public comment on it.
Okay, is that?
We need to, we need to vote on that, don't we? The opportunity zone?
Do we vote first?
They've asked to talk.
Somebody wants to make a public comment?
Just let you know.
After the, during the public comment period?
It's up, it's up to you what you want to do.
You have a mic, Tom?
The opportunity to, to speak, would have, to have spoken on this, would have been at the first public comment?
Or the next one, but what?
Or the next one.
I mean, I don't mind having citizen comment on it. They should, I mean, let's just.
Okay, all right.
So, yeah, go ahead.
Catherine Bernard.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Catherine Bernard, 1321, Oaklawn. I unfortunately do not have a representative here today, so I do appeal to all of you. First, on both of these Buford Highway issues, we are considering a very serious redevelopment powers law referendum on the upcoming ballot that will significantly impact the city's powers as to redevelopment. There is no reason to be rushing these plans, and I echo here Ronnie Mayor's sentiments, there is no reason to be rushing these plans when you have not even had the opportunity to see what the citizens think about the redevelopment powers law. Every time I've addressed a public official on this, it's been like, well, we'll see what everybody says in November, you have the opportunity to vote on it. But when you're making decisions about these kinds of far-reaching plans, which I must respectfully disagree with Councilwoman Williams, because they're more than a suggestion, they do have an impact on the type of planning that is done in our city, I think that we should wait until you get the citizen input on this important referendum before you move forward. As for the opportunity zone plan, you know, I hate to be the fly in the ointment, but how much have we paid Mr. Young over the past 10 months? He is a talented lawyer who deals with very complex legal issues, and the amount of taxpayer money that has been spent on studying opportunity zones could have gone to actual tax breaks to these businesses itself. What we're doing is spending a vast amount of taxpayer money on complex tax credit schemes, and then, at the same time, and then, at the same time, we're trying to shut down the pink pony with 300 jobs on Beaufort Highway. It doesn't make sense. You're spending money to send a private investigator into businesses on Beuford Highway to try to shut them down, and then you want an economic opportunity zone that's allegedly to bring jobs to that same corridor. Ladies and gentlemen, this does not make sense. I understand an economic opportunity zone means lots of employment for lawyers and politicians and all of the other people in this room. It does not mean more opportunity for the people on Beuford Highway. What you need to do is leave them alone. Right now, you have, I've heard from the mayor that, in the free market, that this will develop over the next 30 years. There's been $50 million worth of real estate purchased within Beuford Highway over the past year. There is development going on. We do not need this government intrusion, and I am asking you to step back. There are many people I have talked to who felt the same way, those of whom who actually know that there is some kind of redevelopment plan going on, which is unfortunately a minority. Going back to that redevelopment powers law issue, when you voted on this to put it on our ballot on July 29th at the specially-called meeting of the City Council, Marie Garrett said there would be a plan to educate the public. Where is that plan? It is not present. We have talked to people all over the city, and they all say, thank you so much for letting me know about this important issue that is going to be on my ballot. I have heard nothing about it. I've gotten brochures about parks, I've gotten brochures about how wonderful the city is, but nothing about these critically important issues. So I ask you to set these aside, at the very least, until the referendum issue is decided. Thank you.
Next?
Patrick Thomas.
Do you want to read his, uh, comment?
I am opposed to consideration of the Beufort Highway Opportunity Zone Plan until after the redevelopment powers law on the ballot November 4th.
Or he's already filled out a card?
I didn't, I imagine Patrick Thomas may feel the same way, but reading the line item, I didn't understand what this plan even was. Hearing the presentation, I'll tell you, I'm, I'm, my line of work as a corporate tax accountant is on the back end of this, where I've had the opportunity over the last 12 years to work with a number of Fortune 500 companies who take advantage of this credit. It is a, a great incentive program at no cost to the local taxpayers and completely, for the record, I completely agree with Ms. Catherine Bernard, that I don't support the Redevelopment Powers Act on, on the ballot in November. But this issue in particular is completely separate and apart from that, and I would urge you to pass this tonight. Thank you.
All right.
No others.
All right. Is there a motion?
A move that we consider and approve, the Beufort Highway Opportunity Zone Plan.
I second.
Any discussion?
Discussion is, I, you know, I think that it is important that, that we continue to be, you know, to work, work hard on getting the message out to our public about why we do some of these things. I mean, we, we deal with, you know, the reality is the general person in the public, city politics is pretty low on their list of priorities in their lives, and yet we, we get, you know, little bits and pieces of information, and oftentimes, when you just get bits and pieces of information, you don't get the whole story. So I'd like for us to, to really consider as we, you know, you know, since we're approving this tonight, to see about, you know, getting synopses of these, of these issues that deal with sort of economic development strategies, you know, possibly on one page, an economic development page for the city. Because I think it is important that we educate people, because hearing the, the difference of opinion, you know, obviously there's, you know, there's a, you know, there may be just a difference of opinion. I contend that there's, you know, there's the potential to educate the public about this, and from someone who works in this industry as a CPA and, and deals with this on a real-life basis, you hear something very different than what we heard from Ms. Bernard. So it's important that all the citizens get an opportunity to get a, a well-informed education about these matters.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, it's the, the attempted connection between the Beufort Highway Opportunity Zone Plan and our Beufort Highway Improvement Plan and redevelopment powers, I just don't, it's just not logical, doesn't make sense. The Opportunity Zone is not government intrusion, it's government giving back money to people who create jobs out of the withholding, payroll tax withholding. It's been very, pretty clear, we have a duty to promote the economic development of our city, and having this tool is something that's going to help us attract businesses and jobs to Beufort Highway, which will help the people on Beufort Highway. And it's, again, it's a no-brainer as far as I'm concerned, it's, it's, which means to me, not that you don't have thought on it, but it's something that you should do and you have an obligation to do. It's a, it's a wonderful program, I'm familiar with it, and, and we are, would be remiss in our duties as elected officials to not look out for the best interests of our citizenry, and, and part of that is economic development. And I'm very excited that when this process gets started, we have, or have the opportunity to announce our Opportunity Zone, and then subsequent to that, we have the opportunity to announce so-and-so company is bringing 200 jobs to Brookhaven, and some of those people who live in some of the poorer conditions will be working at those places, and, and their, their lives improve, the conditions on Beufort Highway improve, the economic stratum and development on Beufort Highway improves, and that's part of our job. And being afraid and, and fear-mongering on things like this doesn't do anything but keep you behind. And we have, we see examples all the time of governments and cities that don't try to improve the conditions and the economics of their city. And we're, we're forward-thinking, and we want to do things that encourage good development, good free-market opportunities for job creation, and Opportunity Zone is, there's nothing more pleasing to me that we are able to say, we're, we have a zone here where if you create a job, we get to take money away from the government and give it to you. I think that's a great, a great thing to have, and I'm very excited about it. So I hope we are all in agreement with that, and I think we are, so. Any more discussion?
Well, the, just to correlate with that is that there's a five-year credit. So it's an incentive to create a job, but once that job's created, after five years, that incentive rolls off and you still have the job that's been created.
Right. All right. All in favor of adopting the motion, standing by somebody saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, it's approved. Other business?
We have none.
All right. Public comment?
How you doing, Mayor, City Council? I think a lot of people are confused about living in a city. I myself have lived in a city all my life. And how you can tell the parts of the city that you're in is that, again, the reason I'm going to support redevelopment powers is, again, let's go over. We used to have Ryan's Steakouts here, we used to have a Publix over in Northeast Plaza. Now, we used to have Dunkin' Donuts, we used to have Captain D's or Long John Silver's over there. And those are main chain businesses. Those are businesses you want to see for your family to go eat. We live in upscale neighborhoods, but we do not have an upscale highway. That's the problem. You cannot have both. If you have an upscale neighborhood, where are we going to eat? If you have a downscaled highway, why are there no businesses there? Because the businesses moved out. The businesses abandoned Brookhaven, they abandoned Beuford Highway. That's why we're supporting the Brookhaven, the city of Brookhaven redevelopment powers so that Brookhaven can develop this area, so that they can bring back into these mainstream businesses for our neighborhoods. It's a win-win situation. Everybody wants to complain about Beuford Highway, but they want to sit there and say, oh, don't touch it, let it rebuild itself. I'm not going to be in a nursing home by the time they finish rebuilding Beuford Highway. That's where we're going with this. Just to make a point, these are some of the businesses we have now. An adult strip club, an adult store called Stardust, Title Pond, pawn shops. Is that the kind of business that you want to promote in an upscale neighborhood? That's the kind of businesses that come to a low-poverty area. Those are hardcore facts, and I hate if some people don't like it. That are the facts, ladies and gentlemen. I have lived here all my life, and I can show you city after city that has destroyed itself right now. We need this redevelopment powers so the people that we elected, which are you, Mayor, City Council, the city manager, to take control of this nonsense and to get the city, this Beuford Highway, back to where it belongs, because if you leave it in the hands of normal business and developers, look what they have done. They've left us this garbage on Beuford Highway now. It's their fault. It's the people who want the, the commercial and redevelopers to have the power to do it themselves, well, guess what, ladies and gentlemen, we gave you that chance, and what you left us is a bunch of garbage. Now, that's why I'm saying 1,000% is to get behind the redevelopment part and vote yes in November.
Thank you. Next?
No more.
Okay. All right, public comments is over. Mayor's comments. Appreciate everybody's input tonight and really enjoy listening to the different opinions on all kinds of issues. Again, Live in the Park, Clayton's blocking the sign back there, but this Sunday, 1:00 to 7:00, live music, live free music festival in the park. I'll be performing around 5:00 with House Broken. Come see me, bring your tomatoes and onions.
Being a football Saturday, will there be football?
It's a Sunday.
Oh, it's Sunday.
It's a Sunday. I think the Falcons game will be broadcast, there's going to be a big blow-up TV or something. Yeah. So you won't miss any NFL football. And this Thursday at Clax Corner, walking with the mayor from 6:00 to whenever for two miles in Brookhaven Fields. Any citizen welcome to come and join me and just bring your walking shoes and don't slow me down, but talk, talk fast and walk fast. All right. I think that's all the comments I have. And executive session. Is there a motion? Go ahead.
Yes, for litigation and for personnel.
Mm-hmm. Is there a motion?
A move that we enter into executive session for litigation and personnel matters?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Just to let the public know that after this executive session, we'll, we'll adjourn that and then adjourn the meeting.
Right. So you can stick around if you'd like, but we're not going to do anything after the executive session, we'll just adjourn. Anything else? All in favor of executive session, standing by somebody saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?